John Ellisor is admiring my gavel work. Oh, it's pretty good. I now call to order this May fourteenth special meeting in the Friendswood City Council and announce that we have a quorum. Tonight's invocation will be led by David Loren, Senior Pastor at First Baptist Friendswood. And Pastor, we want to thank you for allowing us to use one of your rooms at the church for polling station this past election. And you guys always step up. I love doing State of the City there. That's my favorite venue.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, as we gather tonight, we do so to honor some special individuals. And Lord, we're thankful that by your sovereign will, you place leaders into position. And so tonight, as we install the mayor, Trish, and John for their term of service, we pray special blessing over them, that you would give them wisdom and grace as they lead and make decisions, that as the entire city council and our city employees make decisions each and every day for our citizens, that they would do so with their best interest in mind. And so help us as citizens to be supportive and encouraging of them in their roles and responsibilities here within our city. And we ask, Lord, that you continue to make this a wonderful place to work, to live, to worship, and to play. We ask all this in your name. Amen. The American flag?
A pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At a state of Texas flag.
Our pleasure allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Turn this off. Turn that off. Wanted to recognize a few people in the room. We have the oldest possible council member, former council member Lynn Agnes here, who was on the very first city council. Let me see, just looking around the room, former Mayor Dave Smith is here. Thank you. Thank you, John. I was coming around. I was gonna come back to Mill. But thank you, John Scott, former council member John Scott is back there. Former council member Jim Hill. I see you. Former council member Janice Low. And former council member Patrick McGinnis. President of the School Board is here, Tony Hopkins. My wife is here, First Lady of Friendswood.
And it's her birthday.
And it's her birthday, but we can stop right there.
You gonna sing?
I'll be in, no, I'll be in trouble if we go any further. Alright, so let's get on with this. Item four, public comment. Do we have any cards? No one signed up to speak, so sorry if you were thinking about it. That's it. Item five is council comments and reports. Item A is to recognize council member Steve Rocky for his 12 years of service on the City of Friendswood City Council. Usually I look down here at Mayor Proctown Rocky and I let him go first, but...
How about let me go last?
I'll let you go last. That's a, that's fair. Council member Brent.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for bringing that up. We were just talking. I'm really gonna miss, John, I'm making this comment to you as well. I'm really gonna miss that the mayor always looks to the left and Steve always is a team player and he leads off. And I am so grateful. You know, I really enjoyed serving with you. You're gonna be missed. Your wisdom, your experience, you were willing to share all of that with us and we're very, very grateful, Steve. So we'll miss you, but I still get to volunteer with you in other capacities, so I'll look forward to that. But thank you for your service here. Appreciate it.
I think it says a lot about a person's character who is willing to volunteer for 12 consecutive years with one thing, especially when you can't always make everybody happy. So it's not just volunteer, but it's, it's a, it's a job of service, of servant leadership. And I think you've done that well. You know how to listen and I think you're a great listener. You always try to understand other people's points of view. And I've always respected you and wanted to listen to you as well, to hear your point of view. So I'm gonna miss you and I appreciate all of your hard work and your leadership.
Well, I also want to thank you for, for working with me when I came on board and everything. You, you helped me out a lot and I even had some people come up to me and go, "Boy, you sure are agreeing with Steve Rocky a lot." And I said, "Well, he makes a lot of sense a lot of times and what's not to agree with?" But I really enjoyed working with you, Steve. It's been a wonderful experience for me. And I know 12 years has been a wonderful experience for you to serve the community. You have such a servant heart and just, just wonderful and congratulations, great job. Also, what I really liked about you is you always put the resident first, even though it might have been in conflict of what the city may have been wanting us to do, you always thought about them first and, and I admired you for that always. So congratulations on your term and congratulations for not having to come back here and do this again.
Council member Matranga.
Yeah. Steve, I started working with you when I was on planning and zoning. And thank you for your guidance then. Thank you through all, all the help. Watching you from the audience was, was a pleasure to listen to all the reasons that you gave for your thoughts. You were willing not only to vote, but you would always tell us why you wanted to vote and that's important in, in that background. And serving with you for the last year, I appreciated your guidance and your example. So thank you for everything you've done for the last six years that I've been on planning and zoning or here.
And Steve, I know I said a lot last week, but I just want to echo what everybody else said up here. Just thanks for all you done. You were the first person I really got to know up here back in 2015 or so. And I, it's been an honor to serve with you and I look forward to seeing, you know, the capacity you stay with us in this city and the volunteerism. We really appreciate.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. I, I can never help myself. I gotta tell this story again. It was at a swim meet, Friendswood High School swim meet. Steve and I were parents of swimmers. Couple of swimmers are sitting right here. Here comes a couple of other swimmers. They're, they're usually late. So he came up to me at a swim meet. It must have been, how many years ago? Because these kids have been out of high school for, seems like forever, just a few years. Anyway, we were at a swim meet. He wasn't on city council yet. It was definitely more than 12 years ago. And he said, "Mike, you know, when you're done at NASA, you ought to think about running for city council in Friendswood." I looked at him, I said, "Steve, I will never run for city council in Friendswood." But you know, you learn, never say never and things change, things happen. And, and I'm glad that you put that little seed in my brain because it's grown and... I'm not sure I want to thank you for it, but, no, I, I do thank you for it. It's been a great ride. I've really enjoyed this and definitely gonna miss you because you are one of the guys that have been here so long and you have the corporate knowledge and you remember everything that we ever did as council. I don't know how you have such a great memory, but you'll remember. Yeah, I remember, you know, back in Ott nine when we had that vote. Some people just remember stuff. I don't, I don't. So thank you for your service. I know you're gonna stick around and we'll tap into your talents some more. Appreciate you.
Do I get to talk?
Mayor Proctown Steve Rocky for the last time.
I'm gonna say a few things, but a, a year or so ago, Daniel, they had a party at their house and I was surprised by his fiancee. She said, "Hey, I need you to give a speech. Can you do it?" And I said, "Elected official, I can give a speech, no problem." So I'm gonna give a speech, but hopefully short. When I first moved to Friendswood, I, something happened and I, there was a reason I had to come to city council for something. And I remember going home afterwards and telling the family, "You gotta love this town." There's a city council member named Kitten and there's another one named Measles on the council. And so over the years, I always thought if somebody new comes in here, they gotta go, they go home and say, "Hey, we got somebody named Rocky on this council." So first I'd like to introduce my sons. They're in the front row. You guys stand up, stand up. And Elliot, stand up. Come on, come on. So these are my two sons and they came down from Dallas just for this. Elliot's my stepson and what a lot of people don't know, first of all, my two boys, the first time they got the vote in a local election was for me, I think. They haven't, they've been playing a little canny. And Elliot and Daniel were, became friends in junior high and they actually introduced Susan and I. So we, we, we met the old fashioned way. Our kids put us together. And so I'd like, Susan, you could stand up. This is my wife, Susan. So Susan and I had just started dating when I told her one day, probably over dinner, "Hey, I'm gonna run for city council." And I remember her look was, "What am I getting into with this guy?" You know? And, but she's, she soldiered on through this and I've always appreciated that I would talk about votes and things were coming up and Susan would always give me her opinion, which was usually different from what I would, what I was thinking. Because I always got to hear what the opposition was gonna say first and I appreciated that. So I want to start with the city staff. The city staff, and for those of you that don't interact with them, they are top notch, par, professional, helpful, outstanding. And I've always felt working with these guys was like getting to drive a Rolls Royce. I mean, somebody else built it, somebody else paid for it, we get to drive it. And they're all just absolutely fantastic. A few I do want to mention specifically. Before Sally was on, Billy Enoch said this, Jerry, and he was leaving and he said, "Tell me one day, you should ask to be the library liaison." And I thought, "The library? Okay, well, you know, who'd have thought?" That has been so much fun. And I have an added benefit because Michael's wife is a librarian, so it gets me in good with my daughter-in-law. And, and so, and the other thing too is that in the library, you know, Matt and his crew are just wonderful. And I plan to continue working with the library and their gala and other things as well. And the other group I want to mention is our two police chiefs. Bob, I consider a great friend. I, I think it was just an honor to serve with both of them. They are the best police chiefs you could ever imagine in a town like this. And, you know, they've just been wonderful. And as far as Chief Rogers, I'm keeping an eye on his son. I expect, we, a couple of us share Astros seats. I expect to see him playing for the Astros someday. So I hope he does well. And last, specifically, Murad here. My, Murad and I are both engineers that graduated from U of H. So you know, we have a kinship of being U of H engineers and I've always appreciated everything Murad does. He's, he's just, he's just the best. He's just the best. A couple of other things, you know, when you get in these positions, people help you get into the position. And I've had a lot of people who have mentored me. Dave Smith is one. Dave Smith was always willing to help me, you know, and understand things from a deeper perspective. And I gotta tell you, I sure miss Harold Whitaker. I sure miss Harold. Harold was just so nice to talk to and get a perspective. I can just, you know, sitting at his kitchen table and listening to him and I, you know, and I miss him. So now I'm gonna talk about you guys, okay? And, and there's a few, as Mike mentioned, there's a few council members in the audience that I worked with and I appreciate you guys coming tonight. Couple of weeks ago, you know, somebody on Facebook, I don't remember who it was, accused me of saying one thing and then voting a different way. And I, I gotta tell you, she's absolutely correct. Occasionally, I would come in here and one of you or one of the guys up here would say something and it would change my mind. And I consider that being open-minded. I consider that part of the job, is to listen. The seven of us that are up here have, are really the only seven that can truly understand each other because we're faced with the same things and we have the same information. And so I, I think that just, everybody I've served with, I've learned something from. Every single one of you, everybody out there. When I first got on council, a day or two after each meeting, Jim Hill would call me up and tell me all the things I did wrong. And, you know, I would listen to him, but I tell you, even Jim Hill would say things up here that would occasionally change my mind. So I think it's... And, and, you know, a lot of people would always talk about how John Scott and I always argued and disagreed and all that. But a lot of people don't realize that John Scott and I were friends before we were on council and we still are friends. And we never took it personally. It was just, it was just honest debate. Now I want to talk, I, I have had the absolute fortune of serving with two wonderful mayors who are very different. Kevin was wonderful because he, he just, he let us kind of go. And Mike is, in my opinion, the best mayor I've ever seen. And what we all like, Mike, about you is you love that ceremonial stuff. None of the rest of us. You know, you can't go a day without seeing Mike's picture at a ribbon cutting or something other. And, and he's really good at it and he speaks, speaks really well and, and he... Mike has the most uncanny ability to remember names. I don't know how he does it, but he remembers names and that's a skill I just honestly don't possess. And so one of the things I want to say now that will be done in just a few minutes is that now I can talk to all of you and it won't be an opens meetings violation. So you can always call me and say, "Hey, we got a vote on those. What do you think?" And, and knowing what's coming, good luck. So overall, I want to say, you know, I, it's been 12 years. I could have raised these kids from kindergarten to graduating from high school in those 12 years. I've enjoyed it. I've liked being up here. I do think it's time for somebody new. I'm like, there always is, you know, at some point. And one of the things that, you know, just as an advice is I think when you're sitting up here, we all have national politics. We all believe this, that, the other thing. I think you gotta set those aside. Friendswood's a conservative town and nobody likes taxes and we all understand that. But, but you have to do what's best for Friendswood. It's sometimes not the same as what your national politics would be, but you know, you gotta keep that in mind. And finally, I hear and I heard, I've heard it a lot in the recent elections, you know, people saying, "We gotta overthrow the in crowd," you know? And I want to step back a second. One other person I wanted to mention here who's here is Deborah Chaney, Deborah Winters-Chaney. Here's the story with Deborah. First time I ran, she opposed me and she was supporting my opponent. But as the ensuing years went by, real estate things would come up. But she's a real estate agent and I would call her up and say, "Hickman Coffee, can you explain how the real estate works?" Although I, we would. And after a couple of these, I ran into her at the HEB. And she, and I was talking to her and, and I said, "You know, Deborah, if you're not careful, you may vote for me again someday." She said she probably would, but as a favor, I had to try out and act with her at the Purple Box Theater. Although we did do one play where she had to grab me and fling me down into her lap. And we had to choreograph that so I wouldn't kill her. So one of the things I did want to say is I hear a lot about the in crowd. You know, we gotta, you know, there's the inside group. There is no inside group here. When I ran, nobody knew me. To be in the inside group of Friendswood, just volunteer for something. Just volunteer and you're automatically it. That's how it works. It's that simple. So there's no in, in crowd. All you gotta do is, is volunteer. So what I might, my last word is just keep arguing. It's, everybody wants to know that you guys are arguing the things out and, and I think it's, it's a very positive thing. So John, where are you at? I bequeath you the seat. John Ellisor. It's a great seat. And now for me, it was great because I got to sit next to the lawyer and I could whisper. You being a lawyer probably don't need that. But some very illustrious people have sat in seats. The therefore mentioned Kitten Brizendine, this was her seat. Jerry Erickson was position number one. Janice, you sat in this seat, didn't you? Oh, you were sixth, okay. So even, so there's been some really great people in this seat and I'm sure you're gonna do a wonderful job. And so I think we're all excited to have you and it's, I'm done. Kick me out. See, normally all that clapping is for Deborah at the theater. I don't get one.
We have a couple pardoning gifts for you. Yeah, as punishment, you gotta take your picture.
I, I'm gonna do that now. Can I do this first? Just to let you know, I have something for all of you. And I'm not trying to start precedent, but I am a woodworker and I just thought I'd take one. And then for the guys that I all served with too. But we'll do that next. Where do you want? Okay. And you guys can open. By the way, the little magnetic box, so just pull up the thing off.
Steve, you wanna switch while everybody has theirs before we open it?
I'd like to mention Steve is a good woodworker. We were at the Friendswood Education Foundation Gala and he made a rocking chair and had donated, and I still don't know how many hours he spent on it, but I bought it. And it's, it's for big guys and I love that rocking chair. It's in my poker room upstairs. It's in my poker room and I love that chair and he is a good woodworker.
And the trophy case is at the auditorium.
Yeah, yeah, I made those. Since you can't see what they're doing, I made each one of them a gavel. And it's, it's a, I made it myself, you know, and it's out of maple. And I also made the plate and the plate is engraved with their names and the city... Yeah, there you go. So I, I know the mayor gets to keep his gavel, but this one's made by me and engraved. And if you don't like it, it makes a great thing for the grandkids to beat on.
It's gorgeous.
Let's hear it sounds.
Ready?
Yeah.
It works.
With that, we'll move on to item six.
So you got competition tonight, Mike, for the gavel.
Election canvas. We need you for a couple more minutes, Steve.
Yep.
Canvas the returns of the City of Friendswood Special Election Held on May 4th, 2024. Will now conduct the canvass of the City of Friendswood Special Election Held on May 4th, 2024 regarding the reauthorization of the city's street maintenance. As the canvassing authority, we shall prepare tabulations stating total votes along with precinct by precinct, total number of the votes for each candidate. I'll now read a summary of the tabulated results of the election based upon the complete tabulation, which is before each council member. Voter summary is absentee ballots cast 213. Ballots cast for early voting 1,123. Ballots cast for election, for election day 455. Provisional ballots zero. Number of registered voters 30,639. Total number of votes cast 1,791. Voter turnout 5.85%. Proposition A election summary is as follows. For absentee voting, four received 188 votes and against received 25 votes. For early voting by personal appearance, four received 861 votes and against received 262 votes. For election day votes, four received 321 votes and against received 134 votes. Total votes cast, four received 1,370 votes and against received 421 votes. Now delivering the returns, tally list, and early voting precinct reports using our canvas for the election to the city secretary, general custodian of election records, who will preserve them for the period for preserving election records. It's now 5:28 PM and this concludes the canvas of the City of Friendswood Special Election Held on May 4th, 2024. Now we move on to item 6B to consider an ordinance declaring the results of the City of Friendswood Special Election Held on May 4th, 2024. Please note that there is a redlined version of the proposed ordinance. Eddie G. replaces with the final canvas results. I have a motion to approve this item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Official canvas report is available by precincts if desired in the city secretary's office in C-Hall and will be made available through the public information request process. Okay, item seven, swearing in ceremony. We move on to item 7A to administer the oath of office. Mike Foreman for the office of mayor, John Ellisor for the office of council member, position one, and Trish Anks for the office of council member, position three. The oath of office will be administered to each incoming member one at a time after each oath. I'll hand the incoming council member their certificate of elected official, after which family members and friends are welcome to come up and take pictures. We're gonna begin with council member position number one. So Judge Kerry Neves will come forward to administer the oath to incoming council member John Ellisor. Once that's completed, Judge Waltz will come forward to administer the oaths for council member Anks and myself.
I, John Ellisor.
I, John Ellisor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council member position number one.
Of council member position number one.
Of the City of Friendswood.
Of the City of Friendswood.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this great state.
And of this great state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, councilman. Alright. My pleasure.
Councilman. You have a seat. Protect your seat, councilman.
Trish, right hand, please. I, Trish Anks.
I, Trish Anks.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
Duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council member's position three.
Of council member position three.
City of Friendswood.
For the City of Friendswood.
City of Texas.
In the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
The United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. Two lefties. Three including legs. Are you giving me a class?
The tip of a lecture.
Thank you. Thank you.
Supposed to wear your pin, Trish.
I'm sorry, what?
You were supposed to be wearing.
So I know, I know, I know.
You have to meet. I, Mike Foreman. I, Mike Foreman. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully execute. That I will faithfully execute. Duties of the office. Duties of the office. Of mayor of the City of Friendswood. Of mayor of the City of Friendswood. And of the state of Texas. And of the state of Texas. And will to the best of my ability. And will to the best of my ability. Preserve, protect, and defend. Preserve, protect, and defend. Constitution and laws. Constitution and laws. The United States and of this state. The United States and of this state. So help me God. So help me God. All right, thank you, thank you. Appreciate that. We have one business item, item A, consider the election of the mayor pro tem. Now, we never do this at a canvassing ceremony because normally we're not losing our mayor pro tem as as we did tonight with Steve. So in order to have a mayor pro tem going forward, in case I get hit by a bus tonight, we're gonna we're going to proceed with this item. So Trish?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for Joe Matranga to be our next mayor pro tem.
Second.
Motion to a second. And by way of discussion, I'll just explain that many years ago, Steve Rocky actually came up with this great idea that mayor pro tem should serve for a year, and it should always be a council member who hasn't done it yet. And so we always go to the most senior council member that hasn't ever been the mayor pro tem. We had a special case last year was Steve finished out his career here as mayor pro tem. But we had already gone through all the rest of the people up here. Everybody's been the mayor pro tem. So that's why Trish made the motion, I think, that Joe should be mayor.
Well, just one of the reasons.
Thank you, Trish.
You're welcome, Joe. I do want to say one thing though, Joe. I know you're a man that's a deep thinker, and you like to talk things out. But I just want you to know that Councilman Branson, when she was mayor pro tem, holds the record for the shortest meeting. In my and I never even had to do a meeting because I was mayor pro tem during the pandemic. So you have some records to kind of pull in. I just want you to keep that in mind.
Thank you very much for that challenge.
And I think in my six years, I've only missed one meeting, and that was Sally was mayor.
Nope, Steve. Your plane got stuck when you were coming College Station.
Two. All right, I got a motion and a second. All in favor? Congratulations, mayor pro tem.
I will work very hard for your health and continue to make every meeting.
Well, with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Please join us outside for some refreshments.